Welcome everyone, the council meetings September 3rd, 2024. Anyone in the audience who's at the front of their headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring it up to you. Not seen any, but Fredco pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I will. Councilmember Blush.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
And we have Councilmember Sappia Zoom.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager?
Not at the time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Council have any board reports to share? I'm seeing. I'm ready for a reading of the agenda. Donna, would you please read the agenda?
Yes. Vouchers numbered 111381 through 111413 and EFT payment numbers 589 through 610 in the total amount of ninety-seven thousand nine hundred dollars and seventy-five cents. Vouchers numbered 111427 through 111457 and EFT payment numbers 611 through 623 in the total amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand fifty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Payroll warrants numbered 3994 and 13186 through 13242. Warrants 111415 through 111426 in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents. We have two resolutions. Resolution number 1343-0824. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing those city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of one million two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for proposed systemic pedestrian improvement projects. And resolution number 1344-0824. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to accept grant federal funds in the amount of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for proposed railway line removal projects. And we have minutes for the business meeting of July 16th, 2024, study session of July 23rd, 2024, business meeting of August 6th, 2024, and study session of August 13th, 2024.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Mr. Mayor, would you approve the consent agenda as read?
So again.
We motion the second to approve the agenda as read, all of them say aye.
Aye.
Oui.
All right. Council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business comments shall be made and you talk to the entire council and not any other council members. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting unless reasonable disruptive conduct continues when we ask to leave the meeting. Donna, do anyone sign a general public comment tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Susan Kirchhoff.
Hi, Mayor. City Council members, Susan Kirchhoff with the Youth Connection. I just wanted to give a quick rundown. Um, I finally was able to do an annual report for 2023, and it has some wonderful news and idea, uh, things that we were able to accomplish. So I wanted to kind of share positive and good news. So in 2023, our organization continued to provide the essential services and support to our at-risk and homeless youth. Those are individuals that are twelve to twenty-four years old. Our commitment to improve lives and creating opportunities for those we serve has remained unwavering in the eight years, seven years that we've been in business. In, um, the drop-in center for, uh, over 2023, we averaged about a hundred and thirty-nine individual unique bodies coming through our door. Our low number was in February with a hundred and twelve. Our high number in August, 2023, we had a hundred and forty-seven individual bodies. As I shared last, um, time I was speaking, July of 2023, we had, um, three hundred and ninety-six bodies come through our building. July of 2024, we had nine hundred and nine bodies come through our building. And of those nine hundred and ninety-nine, or a hundred and nine, nine hundred and nine, it represented a hundred and forty-four unique individuals. Um, our clothing and meal closets, um, in our meals, we gave out one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two meals. Um, that's us providing meals every day for young people that walk in our door. We try to make it a homemade meal. We had nine hundred and thirty-six visits in our clothing and hygiene closet. Housing support wise, we served and, um, housed ninety-eight individuals. Of the individuals we signed up in our program, we had a hundred and nineteen that were eighteen and above, and thirty-four of those were under eighteen. We, um, prevented twenty-nine people from becoming unhoused through our eviction prevention program. And demographically wise, we actually hit really good markers. We had fifty-nine percent as white, one point five as black, seven point seven as Native American, and twenty-eight point seven five as our Hispanic population, which tells us that we really have to increase what we're doing to serve our young people that are Hispanic. Um, as we look ahead, we're excited to look into twenty, uh, twenty-five. As y'all know, we're this close to getting our remodel done. We're hoping that we can continue to impact the lives of our young people to prevent them from becoming chronic homeless. That's our whole plan, and, um, we know that as a community, we can work together to solve this homeless problem because we need to remember that all of our people that are out there that are unhoused are still humans, and they deserve the respect that each of us as humans have. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dean Jewitt.
Good evening, Dean Dewitt, lifelong Shelton, uh, citizen. I just, uh, got the journal here and on the front page. Uh, we know where we have problems and we're working on it. Eric Anisco, Shelton Mayor. How long does it take? Three years, five years, seven years? Where, you know, where are we at with this? Something that I was talking about four years ago, we're still in the same place. Uh, we can't arrest our way out of the situation. Mark Ziegler, Shelton City Manager. Uh, so if there's an individual that's an alcoholic or an addict, are they of rational thought? Do they have a clear mind? You don't know how many people that I've chatted with that their saving grace was being incarcerated. Why? Because they were able to go into the, into the jail with a clouded head, come back out with a clear head and make some good life-changing situation and decisions that allowed them to become a positive citizen in our community. So yes, you can. So I disagree. Uh, they, uh, we, uh, my wife and I put out a flyer. So there was some confusion apparently by individuals. Uh, they thought that it was a city flyer, uh, Eric Anisco told the, uh, the Journal. Of course, it wasn't a city flyer. The city doesn't actually go out and push that stuff forward so that everybody knows what's going on. If they're gonna do something, they keep it really quiet and they don't blast it out unless it's something like the art block. But if it has to do with Brewer Park or a homeless situation or one of our parks or it's a negative thing, well, then it's pretty much on the down low and you have to find out on yourself. Uh, the, uh, we know where we have problems and we're working on it. I already talked about that. Uh, the, uh, I know that there's a frustration, Mark said, uh, whatever the solution, it has to be planned. It has to be, uh, concentrated. It has to be equitable and lawful. Well, the Supreme Court just passed a law, didn't they? Overturning Roe or overturning Martin and Boizzi. So, uh, Aberdeen had an no lay lay law and it was challenged and it was upheld. So if we have, if we have that, why can't we go forward with it? I know that there's Spokane's underneath the lawsuit, uh, from the ACLU. I know that Spokane is, but that doesn't mean that we don't do anything. Okay? I mean, it's gotten worse. There's vans that have been running around town for years. Uh, the negative impact is, 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 it's ridiculous. Just in the last two weeks, we've had at least a half a dozen people urinating in our parking lot, trespassing, damaging, uh, you know? We have Holly Calhoun that's got a, an excellent business in town, and she ran into all kinds of grief just trying to get a car removed from a gentleman that was up on top of her awning. I mean, where are we at with this? Come on, guys, wake up.
That's all we have in person, but we have two people on Zoom. And our first comment is from Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor Nesko, Deputy Mayor Sherman, and fellow council members. I'm Colleen Carmichael, Executive Director of New Horizon Communities. What can we do to create an effective plan to end homelessness? First, partner with the center. The center is a mission-driven division of the National Alliance to End Homelessness that helps cities, counties, states, and nonprofits move more quickly toward an end to homelessness. It does this by working with them and with people experiencing homelessness to implement evidence-based best practices. That can be found at www dot endhomelessness dot org. Second, listen to the homeless. This is a quote. "I was working on my associate's degree while living with my mother, and we lost our home with fifteen years. She is a veteran who has been struggling with mental health issues. When we lost our home, we had to scramble and figure out what to do to survive. We ended up sleeping in our car." Number three, build housing of any kind. How can we do this? Government can pay developers to build for the middle income earners. State legislators and housing agencies can increase developer subsidies for housing at all price levels. Legislators can tack on extra incentives for workforce housing for the middle class, including a law that decreases property taxes on new projects for below market rate housing. They can raise the income limit to live in the housing so households making a hundred and twenty percent of their area median income can qualify. We can also pass a sales tax to help pay for much-needed housing services. Again, listening to the homeless. Quote, "I was able to get into an apartment. I signed up for about fifteen buildings through their help. They were always sending you three hours away from the metropolitan area, and I'm like, both my jobs are here. I'm not going to drive three hours one way to my two jobs." Number five, acknowledge there's a mental health crisis in every city of the United States. One in five adults experience mental health illness each year. One in six children aged six to seventeen experience a mental health disorder each year. By age fourteen, fifty percent of all lifetime mental illness begins, and suicide is the second-leading cause of death among people aged ten to thirty-four. Lastly, listen to the homeless. Another quote, "We lost our home in a forest fire. Trying to find a place nearby was virtually impossible as there were twenty-three hundred other families trying to do the same thing. We moved from one temporary situation to another, slept in my car, stayed with friends. I'm running out of situations to be able to do that. Homelessness is about poverty, housing, and a lack of understanding about mental health and substance use. We can end it when we choose to address the facts that cause it instead of choosing to listen to the fear that creates it." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dave Redman.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Dave Redman. I'm retired Army officer and as well as the program supervisor at the Shelton Veterans Village. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, Housing First is a proven model for addressing homelessness that prioritizes access to permanent, stable housing linked with services as needed. Housing First recognizes that stable housing is a prerequisite for effectively improving quality of life. Once stably housed, individuals are better able to take advantage of improving quality of life and wraparound services to help, to help support housing stability, employment, and recovery. Without stable housing, attaining these goals becomes more difficult because federal resources to address homelessness are scarce. It is critical that, that communities use these resources effectively to serve as many people as possible by investing in approaches like Housing First that have proven to be the most successful in getting people off the streets and into housing. During the course of the past ten months since opening our doors, we've had the privilege of providing homes for twenty-two veterans, giving them a warm and dry place to shelter and to use as a base to begin rebuilding their lives. In that time, nine of the veterans we have housed have rejoined the workforce. One is married and secured an apartment for his new bride himself, while others have reconnected with strange family. Our residents that have rejoined the workforce hold stable jobs, spend their money locally with Shelton businesses, and they have become a positive part of the community. This program works. Every day I come to work and I see firsthand the benefits of supported living for homeless veterans. Providing them a hand up instead of a handout has enabled them to accomplish things that many thought were not possible for them to accomplish as, as individuals. The support of the city and the county have directly contributed to this success of this and so many other programs. And with your understanding, I'd like to spend just a few moments to cite a couple of statistics from the Mason County reports. According to the profile on homelessness in Mason County in the fiscal year of two, of 2023, Mason County Emergency Shelters assisted seven hundred and fifty-five families with emergency housing, of which a hundred and seventy gained housing. Thirty-eight families stayed in, stayed in transitional housing with thirty-three families housed. Other emergency programs like the Hen Housing Emergency Needs have helped two hundred and thirty-five individuals with critical needs, and the Crossroads Facility serviced two hundred and twenty-one families in their time of need. The programs around Mason County and the City of Shelton are staffed by an amazing group of people who come in every day and give their all. And I look forward to seeing this same report next year, knowing that our little village up on the hill plays a part in the numbers and the people that they represent. Each person with stable housing cycles in and out of emergency, uh, services and apartments less often, has fewer inpatient hospital stays, and requires less use of psychiatric centers, detoxification programs in jails, resulting in lower public costs and better health outcomes for individuals. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
We have several presentations given in our first L-TAC report.
Hello. Um, I have our second quarter report of, um, for the museum. And then following that, I have the car show report too. Um, so for the second quarter, we've had six hundred and forty-seven visitors. Of those ninety-three were out of state and six were international. Um, one example is that we had a family from Finland who were on their way around the peninsula in a motorhome. And so they, um, they decided it was too hot to go to Mount Rainier, so they came to the Olympic Park instead. So, um, after we gave them a map and showed them, you know, the good places to stop, then we ended up, um, helping them find lodging in Seattle and, um, because they had a couple of days before their flight. So, you know, it's a really rewarding job. I, I love that part, helping the people. Um, so, uh, next slide, please. So on our Google ratings, we've had, um, sixteen hundred users. Um, I never understand why there's that spike. You know, it's like, it doesn't make any sense to me, but there it is, uh, every month or every quarter. Um, average engagement is two and a half minutes on our website. Um, and probably aside from the homepage, most people were looking at the 2024 Annual Car Show. Next slide, please. For Square, um, which is also part of, so there's the Google and then there's Square, which is actually the people that run the, our website. So, um, we had fourteen hundred unique visits. Um, we've been selling a lot of books. Uh, one thing that didn't make it into my report was that we had an article in the Seattle Times about the, um, Artist Colony in Hood Canal, on Hood Canal. And so that was fun. Um, I've never been quoted in the Times before and probably hopefully never will again. But anyway, um, but we've sold multiple books. Um, Mike Fredson's Artist Colony book has been, um, popular because of that. Um, and then next slide, please. Facebook. So, um, we've reached twenty-three thousand people. Maybe it's the same thousand looking multiple times. Um, but our top, um, even when I printed this so that I didn't have to read that, I still can't read it, it's so small. Um, but we had twelve thousand reach for, um, a, uh, on, um, a walking tour, historic walking tour that Mike Fredson again did. So, um, and then a hundred and six reactions for that one. Uh, next slide, please. We received a grant, a Community Accelerator Grant, which is through the Paul Allen Family Foundation, which really helps kind of fill in a lot of those holes in our budget. Um, I think it was eighty-five hundred dollars, which for us is a huge amount. Um, next slide, please. Oh, so are there any questions about the museum part of this? One thing I wanted to say too is that, you know, we had six hundred and some last quarter. In July and August, we had over eight hundred people come through the museum. Some of that is tied to downtown events, which is fabulous because we get so many people who say, "Well, I've lived here twenty years and I've never been in." Um, but, um, we also just like randomly will have twenty-five people come in during a day. And then, you know, maybe the next day we only have six, but still, it's all very rewarding. Um, we have the Cruisin' Through Time Car Show, which happened June thirtieth. So segue right into this one. Um, it was the second year that we partnered with the Downtown Merchants Association, um, which is extremely helpful because all of our car club people retired a few years ago during the pandemic. This year's car show brought in, um, over three hundred classic cars, of which two hundred and sixty-seven were actually registered. Some people just parked. Um, in 2023, there were a hundred and forty-six cars registered, so that was a great improvement. Um, we had thousands of spectators down in town on a Sunday, which is a great, um, you know, normally it's not always that busy on a Sunday. Um, of the registered participants, thirty-three were from distances greater than fifty miles. Um, and then I just kind of guess randomly that probably about half of those people are staying in commercial lodging. Um, we advertised for the car show. Oh, and then a hundred and eighty-six cars were from Mason County. Um, advertising for the car show was through the Yellow Book, which is a car show thing, I guess, and, um, social media, both by the Downtown Merchants and then by, um, our Facebook page and our website. Um, we had expenses that were a little over forty-seven hundred dollars and total revenue of about ten thousand dollars, which we will, um, profits will be equally split between the museum and the Downtown Merchants Association. So that's that. Since, are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Dinos Kleimberg. I'm in the Department of Ecology, an engineer there, and, um, I am in the Water Quality Group that oversees municipal operations. Uh, every year, uh, the Department of Ecology awards or sends out awards to treatment plants that have, um, basically, uh, had a perfect year. That, that being, uh, there was no violations or anything like that of their permits. So this year we have, uh, awards to both the, um, Shelton Waste Water Treatment Plant and the Shelton Water Reclamation Facility.
I'm the superintendent of wastewater for Shelton Burnout Show, but, um, these awards are the work from our crews in the field. They're the ones when it's pouring down rain, everybody's at home, that they all have to come in, make sure that everything is running correctly at the treatment plant. Um, on call, work weekends, um, but this is really a testament to their work. So, thank you.
Great job, guys.
Hey, Brent. If you don't mind having guys come up, let's get a picture with the award and get all of you guys, uh, posterity there. Okay, you don't mind? Yeah, whatever works somewhere in there. Yeah, just play one on TV.
So this is the, this is a word that City of Shelton has received a number of times, and it's because of the hard work of these guys every day, um, making sure that we're meeting the standards set by the state that a lot of treatment plants don't meet, frankly. Uh, we can be quite proud of that. Um, it's a duty to our ratepayers and our customers and the environment and our, our partners out in our community. And we've seen some of the improvements, um, by opening further shellfish grounds in, in Oakland Bay because of the work that's been put into that, into particularly the, the main wastewater treatment plant. So, um, it's a significant effort, um, from those individuals sitting in the back of the room. Um, who we, uh, don't take the opportunity to thank them very often, especially publicly. I'm sure they really enjoy being here tonight at the council meeting, but, uh, again, want to say thank you to all of them.
Absolutely, we appreciate all your work, and I think I've been here seven years now. I believe you see four or five of you. In my seven years, you've great work with you guys. Uh, you guys come to us and you say, we want, uh, do be lights, be redundant. You know, you want, uh, new generator to make sure that, that thing goes off in the middle of the night. So, you know, in case of a problem, and, and we appreciate you guys coming to us and telling us what you need and getting that done. So everybody saves, shellfish saves, and the water's more open. And hopefully, uh, we'll continue to lead this down the road and get more shellfish. Anybody have any comments or questions? Great job, guys. Thank you. All right. Okay, we're discussing out of a regular meeting, so we'll have a pair. We have a ordinance related to building height limits. Meeting Development Director J. Hill has details for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Uh, so the first ordinance that we'll be discussing tonight, uh, is one that was, uh, suggested by council at a study session last year and, uh, reviewed again at a study session, um, just back in August. Uh, and that was, uh, the intent of, uh, increasing the viability of development in certain parts of the city, most of the city, um, by removing building heights. Um, and we, we talked about different options, uh, at the time. Uh, and what we came up with was, uh, essentially removing it from all zones. Um, I will say that it does leave height limits in place, uh, in the airport industrial zone and around the flight contours around the airport. So, uh, we don't have that as a, you know, there won't be any obstructions or hazards to air traffic. Um, this doesn't change height limits for wireless facilities, freestanding signs, accessory uses. Accessory uses is important because, uh, we make a lot of provisions that they can be right up on somebody's property line in some cases. Or, um, you know, they're, they're given a little bit more flexibility because a lot of times they're smaller, they're not as tall, they're whatnot. We don't want somebody putting up, you know, essentially an unlimited height structure, you know, right on somebody's backyard property line and whatnot. But the, the main structures, um, on the properties will still have to comply with the, the setbacks, required yards, lot coverage, things like that. Um, but, uh, and there's still, in each zoning district, there are supplementary regulations about some certain things. But generally speaking, um, as you can see in looking through, uh, the attached ordinance to, um, it, it essentially just says building height none across the board except where in those, uh, in those supplementary regulations it's allowed. Um, there had been previous discussion, um, I, I think at the, at the regional study session, uh, with the previous council, just about how do we, how do we know that this isn't going to cause, uh, you know, unlimited height buildings like in, in the residential neighborhood, you know, somebody building a twenty-story building or something. And to be completely honest, the, the market economics just really aren't there. Um, i- if we ever did get to a point where that was feasible and financially practical, the city would be in a really good financial situation because it means our land values are really, uh, you know, increased to the point where the market can support that. Right now, um, you know, we imagine this will probably net some three and four story uses on appropriately sized parcels throughout the residential and downtown zones. And, um, hopefully even in the downtown area, we might even see more than like the fifth story. But, um, when you go over the fifth story, then you start having to go into all steel construction. Um, there's, there's some ways to get to like a five over two where it's wood over concrete, but, um, Um typically you start going to the steel construction and there's some, there's some other kinds of uh. Uh we'll we'll say limiting factors um that make it hard to get to that. Um and so even in places where you know the height limits are are set at like a hundred and fifteen feet or something like that, you usually don't see them if. Just because uh again, the the market has to support the cost of construction, the materials used. Uh and then we have other kinds of things like parking requirements, setbacks, allowed and permitted uses, so on and so on, that kind of like pushback on that, so. Um what this really does is it signals that we're open to um innovative projects, we're open to investment. Um and it's still um with the other regulations that we have in place. Uh going to be compatible with the scale of uh existing lots and development within our city, so. The ordinance was pretty long, just a lot of strike throughs and referencing back to the table. Uh a lot of our development metrics, um including our yard standards, height, uh block coverage, et cetera. Um are all in a table in twenty dot zero six dot oh three oh A of the municipal code. Um and so what we did very simply through the remainder of the municipal code was just refer everything back to the table, so at any point in the future, we. Decide, you know, maybe this didn't work, we just change it in the table, we don't have to go back through and change it in each individual place and whatnot, so it's. A little bit of a cleaner way to uh administer our code, so. Um that's all I have for kind of prepared comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions um y'all have about. What we're proposing to do here.
No, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number two zero two one dash zero eight two four. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending Title Twenty of the Shelton Municipal Code for the purpose of abolishing building height limits.
Mr. Mayor, let me place ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero eight two four on the action agenda at the November fifth. Twenty twenty four regular council meeting.
Right, comments or questions?
If I may add, the one thing I forgot to mention in my original comments, um this does require sixty or sixty day review by the Department of Commerce. Um and that's why I asked to go uh in November, because we need, they have to. They have statutory sixty days to review the ordinance for any comments, we rarely if ever get comments back. Um but that's, they're they're right for all development re- regulations, so um that's why it's recommended for the November fifth. Thank you.
Some of the benefits of this would be like apartment building, apartment down below, maybe if it wasn't, you know, the lot wasn't big enough for parking. They can have like three story apartment, partying, also for office buildings and also for downtown. We have a big lot, you know, western desk, you have retail on the bottom, we could have um retail on the bottom, we can have uh residential on top, something like.
Um and also with commercial development, as you mentioned, um we had a a potential hotel uh about a year and a half ago now. Um and they came in, they they worked their site to get it right under our thirty five foot height limit. Um but this might allow for like a fourth story, which might help with some hotel development or. Um you know, allows for more architectural projection and things like that that make commercial development a lot more attractive, so you're not just getting the. A flat top on all the buildings, so um there's there's some other benefits to raising the height limit as well.
It'd be great to get a local hotel and not have to have somebody look for their uh housing over in Seattle for somebody for the weekend, so.
No?
No.
Bye, Ray.
Any other question? Motion in second place.
Mr. Mayor, are you getting council member sap on video? And make sure that. We're not losing.
Hi.
Thank you.
Closed. Motion carries. The public hearing is closed, another public hearing. Jay has another item regarding rant.
We're gonna go to shopping carts. Number two on this agenda.
Then, I'm I'm here online, um so uh. Mayor and Council, thank you, uh so uh this was uh the result of a couple of different study sessions. Um and some outreach uh to some retailers in town. Um council had expressed the desire to regulate shopping carts throughout our community, um they. General consensus, you know, amongst staff and the public is is um just with them leaving the premises at a lot of our retailers, especially our downtown ones. Um they become uh entrapped in ravines, parks, uh in the creek. And we we uh just our code enforcement officer alone has probably removed forty carts in the last year, plus our public works and park staff. Uh probably an equivalent number and um they're just going in the dumpster and it's a it's a waste, uh not to mention. A nuisance and helping facilitate some uh hazards and possibly some crime as well, so. Um we looked at what a lot of other communities were doing, found that um uh by and large, uh Issaquah had. Probably the most comprehensive set of regulations, um theirs was twenty something pages, we pared ours down significantly from what they had selected. But also, um you know, their theirs have been tested and worked, um and so we uh proceeded with some of the concepts that they had used and. Um at our August thirteenth study session, we took a look at that again and and and. Shrink some of it down and and uh put some bookends around uh fees and policies and um. This is what we have uh in front of you today, um and so uh one thing to note is that we had discussed. This ordinance uh would be approved now with an effective date at the end of the year, and that's uh to give our retail operators some time. To uh adjust their operations and come up with a plan for how they want to retain their carts on site, uh the council had discussions about. Uh wanting to have that flexibility, um that it not just be a prescribed measure, but that there be uh alternatives, or if they come up with something that's. Uh not on our suggested list of items, that there is the flexibility that they can come to us with a suggestion as well. Um and so with that, uh just very general overview of the regulations, uh. Uh they are required to provide uh security measures, which is defined uh. Term uh within the ordinance, um and that means uh anything from electronically activated self braking wheels. To some sort of, you know, personnel on site, there's a a lot of different uh op- options that they could take. Um they are required to contain carts on their property and retrieve them if they leave the property. Uh they are required to post the signage uh that is identified in uh the state law, uh RCW nine eight fifty six. Um and so by putting that sign on there and making it a requirement of the city to have it there, right now, it's just. If the cart has the sign and someone removes the cart, it becomes a misdemeanor, now the sign must be on there, and so. By proxy, if the cart is gone, it's missed appear, um so. Uh and then there was uh again, just removal and collection by the city, we may at at our discretion, remove the carts. Um we'll notify them, uh if the carts don't have the required signage, you don't know who to get a hold of to uh return them, they can just be disposed of as we mean. As we see fit, um there's a flat fee of one hundred dollar per cart if the city is the one who collects that uh if the cart. Um but there's no obligation on the city to be the cart service uh for any of these businesses. Um and then finally, uh just. If a cart is found off of the premises, it's it's a rebuttable presumption that the cart was removed or was taken by someone. From someone who removed it, so anyway, it makes it stolen property essentially, um so someone removing the cart. Uh is would be guilty of a misdemeanor and someone who uh did not remove the cart, but is in possession of the cart. Is uh guilty of stolen uh possession of stolen property, which is gross misdemeanor, so um basically, if you're not on the site. Uh of a retailer and you have a cart who are committing a crime uh with the City of Shelton and other cities that have adopted this as a measure. Um that being said, we've also identified that this is um kind of more of a secondary offense, we're not going to be just. Rolling around looking for people who are pushing carts and whatnot, but if if they have accumulated it along with some other offenses, this is a secondary offense for. Prosecution, so um and again, the ordinance takes effect January first of next year, so. Happy to answer any questions about uh ordinance uh twenty twenty two, twenty two four.
Uh been reading ordinance number two zero two Q dash zero eight two four.
Do you want to know if there's public testimony first, Mr. Mayor? There is not. Yes, ordinance number two zero two two dash zero eight two four. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, adding chapter eight point three zero to the Shelton Municipal Code relating to the regulation of shopping carts.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we place ordinance number two zero two two dash zero eight two four on the action agenda at the September seventeenth, twenty twenty four regular council meeting.
Um one of our allowed uh processes for securing carts is using a a shopping cart collection service. I know every time we brought this up, the last two times, there's been some concern about what that might look like, when I was digging into it. There's nothing around here that I can find online, but there's actually an example of that sort of service in Washington State. I found two metropolitan areas in California. Washington State doesn't have any laws that govern how those would operate, as far as I can tell, California does, they have codes on what sort of. What sort of records need to be maintained and what sort of signage needs to be on the vehicle. Um right now, the language of the of our uh. This language is really open, so that at any time we can add in any sort of thing that I believe too decide. Fits the needs or is suitable to make these requirements, and I was curious if it was reasonable for us to remove the shopping cart retrieval service. Just because it's sort of theoretical, if not to do that exists right now. And if it does come to pass in the future, where the laws have governed it, or there's examples of how it can be used in. In other communities, we could bring it in, but right now, we cannot open that up, I don't I don't know what everybody else feels.
Put it in like as available. Just change the verbiage to that, because I'll let it's out there, I mean, it's bound to happen.
How quickly could we repeal this full resolution if we don't like it how it's made?
Same same process you're hearing tonight, it would, yeah. It would come come before the council as a briefing and an action.
Would it take sixty days or something like that?
This isn't, this isn't considered developing regulations or commerce's um. Per view.
We can always make an amendment to it at any council meeting as well in the near future.
Uh again, following the same kind of process to amend the municipal code.
So it would take longer for us to do it, if we waited, but if we did it earlier. We could nip into it right here, but I hope we're ready to make a amendment at this point, are are you Tom?
I don't know, I mean, I think that's part of the other, another issue is problems, there's no teeth, so if somebody chooses to contract somebody to pick up their carts. As long as we're not picking them up off the street, they're still, uh either way, so. I I don't, I don't know that it really makes much of a difference, it was just a thought.
And the cart patrol could be the store itself, right? The retrieval could be the stores, I don't know, Jay, in your research, I don't know if there's any retailers that are continuing to process such.
E- even in our community, we were told at least two of them are going out and, you know, when they've got somebody on shift with a truck and some time, they go pick them up themselves, so. Um but I I think maybe the door is left open, I know if it, everybody starts borrowing off of someone else's ordinances. And maybe they're trying to leave the door open for, you know, some enterprising individuals to take this on, so it doesn't become a city liability. Um and so, uh I mean, we we could remove it and just, it could be inherent under the, you know, any other method as, you know, deemed by the director. Or it could be, we we leave it in with, you know, as as available, or I mean, there there's a, I didn't hear anything up there that that didn't sound appropriate. It's um you know, whatever flavors the council would choose, so I'm I'm okay.
I think that they have anything.
Did you ask my opinion? I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm in favor of the shopping cart ordinance, I'm fine with it.
I have some questions, so when we first, you just mentioned it again, there's some options here, and when we first started talking about this, there was often, but now it looks to me like it's kind of a whole deal, so. If they put their blood product activated self braking wheels on, they're still responsible if these cars somehow get off the lot, even though that. They've done what we've asked them to do, and they've locked these wheels out, so they they still are helping, going after these carts, correct?
Yes.
And so it's not an option, this is the full meal package, everything on here.
They they must make an attempt to contain and they must retrieve, and if they don't, there's a fee, so we're fine.
So we're not asking them to go out and let people shut off and sidewalk and and take the cart back?
No, no, and and they could probably run into some civil rights if you, issues if they started doing that um themselves.
Asking to retrieve their carts, so it'd be probably very clear that. That they can't do that. Um that's incorrect. So, okay. I. I absolutely believe that any law, these rules, I absolutely believe it, I think that's, that's a huge investment for these grocery stores. I'm not sure if we keep penalizing them for for doing what we asked them to do. Lock the wheels, they somehow get off the the lot and then charge a hundred bucks, I'm, you know. That's what I'm not coming up with.
Uh in in the discussion about the hundred dollars, it was because there's our staff time incurred in collecting, holding and returning. The carts, and so we're just trying to have some amount of cost recovery, but uh again, that's if if the council. Didn't feel that way, we could remove the fine, um the, we do need some kind of a. Fine or fee for violation of this section of the code, otherwise it defaults to an infraction. And an infraction is a five hundred and fourteen dollar charge at a civil violation, so we don't want it to do that, there needs to be some penalty or some declaration. What that is or or how that's worded, we can, we can be creative if that's the desire of the council.
It makes sense to have a different fine or fee in line for people who have not complied with the code at all versus those who we just. Cover our costs for picking up the carts.
We could do that, that seems reasonable, yeah, but. Yeah, like one for, it got off the lot, it still took us some time to pick it up, and then there's one for, you didn't do anything and it took us. Yeah, that that seems reasonable, yeah.
We have amendment on that?
Yeah, absolutely, you can do that tonight, or we can, we can take feedback and read and draft this and bring it back for um for action. You know, based on this, based on the feedback, or you can certainly provide an amendment to the. To the uh ordinance.
Well, I I guess it's not there yet, if, because some more fine makes sense, I don't, I'm not sure if we all want to make it the infraction level. Or if it needs to be something slightly more like influences action. Without being overly, but I don't know.
How can we get there? And so this is our starting point, this is our talking point, basically our problem.
I agree, we we put this out there and then the local big three go out there and do it the right thing and we get this cleared up and it just works out. So if we have to cross a bunch of different bridges as we come, you know, if all of a sudden somebody racks up a few grand in cart fees and we're like, okay, this didn't work out. Then, you know, we have a different conversation, but we gotta start somewhere, so I think this is a good starting point.
Co- correct, I I absolutely agree with that, so I'm just, I think we're starting everywhere, um I mean. You know, they're asking certain stores to spend two thousand dollars on locking mechanisms and some stores spend ten to twenty thousand on locking mechanisms. The members saying, okay, if your carts do get off the property, we're gonna charge you again, I'm not sure that's quite fair for businesses that are. That are, you know.
I mean, we could set it up so that, you know, fees can be waived if reasonable effort was made, as opposed to where. You know, if you're not doing anything, you said, just let it all go and and all your carts are all over town all the time, that's something else I'll forget, but I mean. Uh just like anything else, it's gonna be a case like these phases, I would imagine.
And and to that, uh we did in our original version that we brought to you, um at the last study session, have something like that in there. That if if there hadn't been a collection within, I think, thirty or sixty days or something like that. Um there there was a provision like what you're talking about, our city attorney while she was reviewing. Thirty or sixty days or something like that. Um, there there was a provision like what you're talking about. Our city attorney, while she was reviewing this, she was trying to shorten it. Get some things out of there to make it a little more readable and impactful. And she took that part out. But I mean, that could easily grow back in. There wasn't anything wrong with that.
We want to make sure that it removes some discretion by staff, right? So we're applying this uniformly and fairly. So a a reasonable effort is is. Bad, poor language within the ordinance. I know that's not exactly what you meant, but just for clarification, it it really needs to be black and white. So so staff can make these decisions and and enforce this uniformly.
And the I think one of the main reasons she pulled that too was then now we have to start tracking. Well, who's the carts and when did we get them in order to give them the, you know, the waiver for the, you know, we had the end of within thirty days, how many carts and so on. Um, by just taking that and just making it the hundred dollar fee, she was saying, this is just faster. And so I I could appreciate that as well. So. And I'm not hurt if you guys want to make any change. This is your ordinance. I'm here to put it together for you guys. So, um, yeah. Playing with the fees or um uh timelines or things like that. I'm totally fine with that.
Well, it sounds like the only change we're gonna have to come back with is going to be um. Scale is gonna be if they actually have done one of these or some of these. Correct? Like they lock the wheels. Um, we're gonna define looking at maybe a lesser fine if their parts off property that what you're.
The one hundred dollars is to recover our costs. I think we should still recover our costs. So maybe. The number in my head is like two hundred dollar fine if they don't have signage, if they don't have demonstrated costs or demonstrated efforts to have somebody on staff retrieving carts or. A retrieval service involved with that or the locking mechanisms. So if they haven't complied. Maybe push the map.
Again, we're are we looking at we're looking at all of this at at one ordinance. So they have to lock the wheel. They they have to um retrieve their carts. They have to. Any personnel, they have to have other measures uh by their their director.
They can select one of those under D.
Yes, it's including but not limited to and then and or so they could they could do one, they could do all of them if they wanted and they could.
Where more are okay then? Because I under the impression we wanted them to lock the wheels on their car. That was the main thing. So we're not giving that. That's that's just a choice. So basically. I don't know. I I think.
So so I guess to. We just jumped from. Oh, five oh eight point three oh five oh to back up to a eight eight three oh oh one oh. And we've been back and forth a couple of times. Maybe we can wrap up one and then go to the next. So let's, if you don't mind, if we'll stay at eight point three oh oh one oh and the security measures. Um, if there's if there's a direction for staff um to refine that or or move forward, we're happy to take.
Just that future will give you six options there. So, you know. Those comes back. Yeah, we just thought of.
What we on?
So this is the security measures.
Yeah.
In eight point. Three oh point oh one oh D security measures, the physical impediments or methods to prevent removal of shopping carts. From the premises of the retailer's action, including but not limited to. And then there's the six choices essentially. And so, Mister Mayor, your your comments were that. You would like to see essentially one measure, security measure, which is locking.
I would definitely like to see the security measure of the self breaking wheel mandatory. That's how you really stop them from doing the property. I mean, other than that, everything else down below, they're just handling the property and we're gonna just be chasing carts, writing fines and chasing carts right to fines. I mean. This electronic company wheel keeps them on the property. I mean, for the most part, I tested one in the Lumpy. I've got. Forty-five yards away from target and it locked. So. I think really.
But retailers, smaller retailers too, that's well, I know, but it's. I guess what I'm saying is that, um, you know, pools and things like that, they have that option so that smaller retails aren't retailers aren't spending thousands and thousands. They can't afford on it, but they're still putting something in place. To try to stop the issue. So whether it be pulls or locked up. Or whatever, that's still going to hopefully prevent it from.
Pools are great because you can't go outside. So that I mean, they're not leaving property there. So.
Right. There's the other option. So there's other options on the just the locking wheels. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think it's more of a if you have a card in to retrieve your cart. Then when you return it, it gives you your money back on your car. If you do not return your cart, it charges you per day. So that's an option too. So by saying they just have a lot of wheels, you just have a way of finding options.
I've never heard of that. That sounds great.
I've used it in the core.
That could be presented as the as one of the other measures. Yeah.
So by saying you can only do this, you're taking away the other options that they might have.
Curious if we can write it in a way that we say prepare our stores. Um, for the bigger stores, like people with over hundred guards and any locking wheels or other options that are allowed by the director and in that sense, like present that sort of. I guess if we break it out, it might be. All the decision. Back to Jay. Chems. So. But again. There's three big retailers in town that are a little bit of a different game than a lot of the other retailers.
Currently. Certainly Hopemore are on the way. Um. In oh six oh of this, there is the exemption section, which is anyone providing fifteen or fewer carts. Or businesses less than three thousand square feet of retail areas. So it does protect some smaller businesses. Um, but any. Somebody slightly larger than that are providing more carts or whatnot would would be. Um, you know, subject to the terms of this chapter, so.
I I think still waiting for, I guess, majority on whether the security measures are okay as written or you want to see um. Some edits moving forward.
I'm okay with this. That's good start. I'll get better forward.
I don't care about that section.
Forward again. No justice. Yeah, part of looking forward now if you still want. And come back if you want to go ahead and.
But, um, Mister Mayor, if you don't mind, we have the the fines and the fees, sorry, eight point three oh oh five oh. To discuss further. Okay, sorry. I just didn't want this to move to action before we had the opportunity to discuss this again and make sure we had clear direction from council.
Yeah, um. This one for me, I just think it it makes sense to incentivize action and follow and complying with the ordinance by. Providing a different fee structure for people who haven't complied with those have, whether that is providing a larger fee in general, just for those that haven't complied and not charging as much. For those who. For those who have complied, so that we can still, we're not looking for necessarily a revenue source, just put more of the cost for covering. Cards on. On people who haven't complied or. I I don't know. I just I think there should be something different for people who aren't complying with the rules than for people.
I'm going to change the fee structure at eight point three zero point zero five zero. From one one hundred to two hundred depending upon the structure. And can we clean that up and come back next week? Or is there a second? I don't know how to do this. I'm just motioning that we change the fee structure for um Councilmember Gilmore's suggestions.
Can I get some clarification on that before the second? So is that okay?
Well, there's there's a motion on the floor. So that's an if that's an amended motion for the ordinance or you can you can simply um. You can simply vote against the motion and provide us direction to come back with an with a revised ordinance at the next meeting if that's.
Uh, we're not second yet.
Oh, excuse me. The original motion was seconded. Yeah.
Hi, George.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so. So now there's only the second. So what what then?
There's there's a motion and a second for as presented. Yes. Without without amendment. Sorry for interrupting.
The motion is second to approve. There's a motion in the second now with amendment.
There's a motion for amending exactly.
Okay, so the motion second government ordinance to raise the fee two hundred dollars based on. If you save the.
Um, based on compliance?
Compliance. That sound right?
As I understand the discussion, it was a a hundred fee, a hundred dollar fee for cost recovery if they have complied and two hundred. If they didn't comply and we had to collect. Is that?
Identify the other of the other options.
That was as I understood. That's that was the one.
The intent.
That was my understanding. All sir.
Okay, motion is second to amend. Um, where we number two zero two two uh zero eight two four to raise the fee to two hundred or non compliance per card. And keep the hundred dollar fee for people who comply. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion fair. Now we have the second motion.
Did we catch council member sap? Okay, good. Make sure.
So now we have the original motion. So we're ready for that?
Yeah, we have a motion second.
We have a motion in second, but we're in two zero two two dash zero eight two four on the October. September seventeen, rig company for consideration. All in favor, say aye. Uh, oppose that motion fair. So it's that, right?
So, yeah, correct. Question mark, right? We we just approved an amended ordinance, right? Uh, correct, the main motion. If you do not want to move that language forward, you should vote nay. If you vote yes, you're moving forward essentially. Both both portion or both versions of this ordinance. Correct. So if you if you want the amended version of the ordinance, yay, if you want the um original version of the. If you don't want the original version of the ordinance, you vote nay. Against that. That's the intent, correct? Or withdraw the motion. Absolutely right.
So.
And.
Withdraw the.
Councilmember Gutierrez made the original motion.
I withdraw the original motion.
Okay. With the amended one.
It'd be amended motion.
Great.
Who's seconding?
Okay, okay.
Yes. Great. I think that's the intent, correct? Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, guys. You get that. You don't get me very often.
And we want to report tonight, correct?
And we do their own.
It's great. Good discussion. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We've designed gay or literally etc. Grant.
Thank you. Uh, so this one, uh, I have two that I'm gonna share with you tonight. They're both for the main project. So, um, as I briefed a couple of times over the summer, um, we've been hard at work with. Uh, one of our on-call engineering consultants to uh basically figure out how to remove all of the rails from the old Simpson-Temple Railroad. Um, and replace that with a gravel surface. It's currently being used as a trail. People are walking and uh whatnot. It's kind of a hazard. It's also difficult for us to. Get out and do maintenance and cleanups and uh move people along if people have started staying there a little too long, so on and so on. Um, so, uh. At at the very least, we need to uh get the rails and the rail ties up and and get it to a more impassable surface. Um, and so that's going to hopefully be occurring. I will be going out to bid within the next couple of weeks for that and hopefully have that interim kind of gravel trail. Uh, within the by the end of the year, hopefully. Um, and that includes um the. A little bit safer, definitely safer, uh, bridge crossing in Goldsboro Creek. Um, right now, the old Simpson Rail Bridge uh is open to below. A a very. Thin person could probably fall through. Um, I I couldn't. Uh, my daughter could. Um, but uh anyway, so we're gonna put a decking over that. Um. Uh, to anyway, so that that's all occurring separately. What would happen after that, what's going to happen hopefully concurrently is that we start um trying to do an invitation event for. Uh, design of a more complete trail. So the final version is what we would call it, you know, paved trail with. Benches and lights and garbage cans and public art and a real, you know, kind of Berg Gillman kind of experience, a bike trail through town. Um, and as we talked about before, there's the portion that runs along the Simpson rail alignment. And then there was a second portion um that we identified, and that'll be the next grant that we talk about. Um, which would run from Neeland Park up to the marina. And we don't have a route for that yet, but that that's what the the part of the grant funding would be for. So. This first grant um can be used for the entirety of the rail trail. Uh, it can be used all the way from US one oh one to the marina. So going. Through all the way out. And this is for final design, construction drawings, specs and all that kind of stuff, or what the final trail would look like. That way, when construction money is available. We have plans, we're ready to go. It's it's plug and play. The next grant that I'll talk about is for just the just the second phase um from Neeland Park across Goldsboro Creek somehow. Uh, to and that as part of the design and planning process, we'll we'll figure out how it's gonna get there. Um, so this uh first award letter is. Uh, was secured by our legislative delegation and i- in the state uh supplemental appropriation budget. Um, it's administered by the Washington State Department uh Department of Commerce. So we're saying we're accepting commerce funding, but really we we owe a lot to our uh thirty fifth delegation for bringing that home. So. Um, this is one hundred ninety nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars um that we'll use for design were uh one or the full segment of of the trail. Um. And again, this'll just be getting us ready for final design whenever we land the approximately one and a half million dollars that it costs to. Do the paving and all the improvements and the safety and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, with that, happy to answer any questions about. This particular grant award.
The motion.
Mister Mayor, we place resolution number one three three six dash zero six two four on the consent agenda at the September seventeenth twenty twenty four council meeting. How many questions?
Mister Mayor, if you don't mind, um, trails have ranked. The highest of projects within our Parks, Recreation, Space and Trails Plan for. Probably the last sixteen to twenty years. So happy that. We're making some movement here um with the project Jay talked about as well to remove remove the rails, uh, further movement to provide some of the amenities that our community has desired for. For many, many years through these planning processes. So this is this is an exciting step in the right direction.
Um, I think you're a second. Do we have a second? We did have a second. Okay, now come to questions. Um, I I did have somebody asked me this weekend. Uh, so right now the rich the trail to the highway is gonna be like a gravel or. Beauty bar kind of trail from now on. And then and then when we do have the money to make that trail more permanent, is it gonna be like gravel and like old path? Fastball path or something? So they can actually ride by someone, they can jog on the other.
You can do it on both. It's the intent. It's a multi multimodal trail, probably twelve feet wide or something like that. Sorry to jump in there, but yeah.
What he said. Uh, it yeah, the plan is for a uh long term will be a paved, um, either asphalt or concrete. Again, we don't have a final design, but it'll be a paved multi-use trail. So. Bikes, scooters, skateboards, walkers, joggers, rollers, dogs, horses, you know, um, anyway, a- and anything non-motorized essentially. Um, and then. Uh, so but the interim trail that you're talking about will just be twelve foot wide compacted gravel. The whole length. Uh, and so, you know, to the extent that it's, I'm. I was on the East Lake Semenish Trail, which wasn't paved for years and years, and it was compacted gravel and it was it was still very ridable as a bicyclist. So. Um, I I think we'll we'll get some good use out of this until we have the construction money.
And we'll have a public process um with this with this planning and design work as well. So we'll get the feedback from the community. We have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And a number of local groups and citizens that'll have the opportunity to try their feedback on what they want to see as an end product as well.
Also important to note that the interim trail, um, our engineering estimate. Uh, showed that there's about four hundred and fifty thousand ish of uh salvageable. Uh, steel, uh, the rails are worth actually quite a bit of money. Um, and that actually pays for the bulk of the project. So we. Anticipate that the total cost to the city, including getting the bridge decking, including the full interim trail uh would cost us sixty thousand or less. It depends on what the bids come back. It could be. Could be more, it could be less. We, um, the city of Woodinville actually made money on that project. They made a hundred and thirty thousand because their salvage value was high. So we don't know what it's gonna turn out to be, but um, you know, this is. We're we're gonna be getting a great amenity for very low cost.
I'm excited. I like walking. But again, uh, that that we're only going to cover that first phase one of the trail, not not the blacktop or asphalt. It's gonna be the the gravel for.
It's it's in our, um, the the full trail project, both phase one and phase two are in the community and economic development strategy from the EDC. So that makes it eligible for some funding. Um, it's in our capital improvement plan. So it's. So that makes it eligible for some funding, um, it's in our capital improvement plan, so it's eligible for transportation credits. Um, there's a lot of different ways you can start pouring money together to fund this project, and hopefully, I mean, we could make it work within the next six years. And that's kind of the, the long-term goal of some of that stuff, but no promises, depends on cost of construction, availability of staff, and so on and so on, but.
Great.
Let's see anything?
This is a dog walker, so this trail is just amazing for the possibilities. And for the health of our community as well, I know walking the dog for me and now over a day is. Worth one thousand milligrams of metformin for diabetes, so there are real health benefits to having a walking trail in the community. And I know what's exciting with our. Problem Parks picture, we've got our Blue Zones and the developments going on, that um, walking and being, making this community a walkable. Community is um, a vision I've had for over ten years, and that it's finally happening, falling into place, it might take us another ten years to get there. But it's a long process, but we're making incremental steps towards it, and it's. Walking my dog ten years ago in Shelton Downtown is a way different experience than walking my dog downtown now. Um, there are way better streets, wa- way better mark, people stop for you, you can make it all the way to Dog Park. We have Dog Park now that we, it was new, new ten years ago, so I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that are happening in Shelton that are. Very beneficial to the citizens and that I'm very proud to be a part of making this um, trailway happen in, in my lifetime. So, um, thanks very much for your hard work, and I hope we continue to do products like this.
My motion is second, place resolution number one, three, three, six, dash zero, six, two, four, to the agenda, September seventeenth, council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Jay, boy.
It rains in ports, right?
Yeah.
Uh. Alright, so uh, this is another set of grant funds that we uh, went out and got for the rail trail project. This uh, is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars awarded through Watchdod's Sandy Williams Connecting Communities Programs. Um, it, this was set up uh, under the Climate Commitment Act, um, and they're trying to fund specifically communities. That have pedestrian impacts related to uh, state highways, and we have uh, one state highway and one federal highway coming through town that. Um, kind of disrupt pedestrian flow, um, and so uh, this two hundred and seventy-five thousand is for. What we're calling the phase two design from Neeland Park out to the Marina. Um, this part gets tricky because we have to figure out how to cross Goldsboro Creek, there's not a good existing pedestrian connection, so we've gotta cross. Somewhere um, on one side of uh, Front Street or the other, um, and then we have to get over. Uh, sorry, First Street, and then we have to get over to Front Street and follow Front Street up to about the Pear Orchard, and then find our way through the Pear Orchard out to the Marina. Uh, there's some older plans uh, for a boardwalk through the Pear Orchard, um, and we'll see if as part of this project, those can be. Renewed and revived if they meet standards, um, and then just trying to get the, all the way out to the Marina, and the, the goal is that. You know, once we have this final complete trail, people will be able to get all the way through town, go past the Art District, get downtown on their, on their bikes or by walking or whatnot. Get out to the water, see the water, there's not a lot of places in the community right now where you can actually even see Oakland Bay, much less get down to bunch of it. So this is really exciting, um, this two hundred and seventy-five thousand, again, it's for um, construction, planning and design, so. Uh, we hope to have full design documents at the end of this process for whatever bridge crossing, whatever trail segments, et cetera, all the way out to the Marina. From Neeland Park. Um. There is, uh, and I mentioned this in uh. The staff report, um. There's an element of risk, so um, there's a ballot initiative right now to repeal the Climate Commitment Act, uh, if that goes through, any unobligated funding. Uh, gets pulled back, so um, we're gonna try to get this spent as quickly as we can, um, knowing that November's just right around the corner. So, um. You know, uh, and again, construction funding hasn't been identified for this project, but we sincerely hope that by being in the CIP and the SEDS. And all of other places that we'll be able to shake some more money loose to get this done.
Jay, you have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to place resolution number one, three, three, eight, dash zero, six, two, four, on the consent agenda. On the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, the council.
How much you question?
I think it's really impressive that we applied for two hundred and fifty thousand. But got ten hundred and fifty bucks. I mean, how long did you ask for my energy more?
I, I wasn't gonna say anything, but they, they asked if we wanted more.
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
That'd be great.
So what's that? It's really important to get the study done, so we're ready to go, depending when um, money comes our way. So thanks very much for your um, efforts in getting this, man.
I was just gonna ask what the timeline was, because if they do repeal that CTA then.
Uh, we would love to get an invitation to bid um, very soon, um, so our, our first priority is getting. The invitation to bid for the rail removal and get that going, and once we have that launched, we can move right into getting an RFP. Um, we want proposals from qualified firms that have done trail design, we want, we want this to be kind of the, the, the jewel necklace of our town. I mean, this is gonna be a, an opportunity to connect businesses, residences, schools, transit, um, uh, so we, we wanna. Get really good qualified proposals, so.
Very exciting, great, a lot of grants, and there's a lot of property there on those tracks, it'd be nice if we could have some kind of maybe leave some retail space, you know. Down there when we get that trail built, maybe new trucks or something like that, you know. Because there's a lot of really wide, wide locations.
There's gonna be some opportunities there when we get through the design process to talk about what kind of other options may be there for. Yeah, other, other community uses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good to me, alright, any other questions? We have a motion is second, place resolution number one, three, three, eight, dash zero, six, two, four, to the agenda, to the council, we all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Jay, one more.
Last one. Right, uh, so we are a very small uh, department, and uh, you know, it's myself acting as the current building official. We hired a building inspector uh, just a couple of, uh, about a month ago. Um, and uh, he's working on getting uh, the appropriate training and certifications to become a certified building official, but that's gonna take a period of time. Um, and so he can do residential inspections, and um, by the end of October, some residential plan reviews, most residential. Um, but we do have a, a lot of work in the pipeline, um, we have uh. Two, one hundred ninety-nine homes, uh, at Olympic Heights that was um, approved in preliminary plat, just a couple. I guess we're on a couple of months ago now, um, we just received uh, an application, well, the, the beginning parts of an application for three hundred and six more homes. Um, and we are still working with another developer um, on just kind of some final tweaks on three hundred and sixty-five homes. Uh, so we're, we've got a lot of work in the pipeline, um, and we absolutely need outside support to help get these permits through. Uh, time is money for these developers, and by building an on-call pool, uh, we can call anybody on the list and say, hey, are you available? To review this multifamily project, this, you know, block of sixty new residences and so on and so on, and we can move things a little bit faster, and we can keep. Our internal review for kind of the day-to-day kind of stuff, we can, we can handle our day-to-day, but um, I. I'll just give you an example, in March this year, when the building code changed, we had a glut of applications, we had um. About sixty single-family homes plus uh, forty-two unit apartment complex plus. Um, a bunch of other tenant improvements and things that just all come in at once, and we're still churning through our backlog on that one. Because it's just so much all at once, and we're talking about ten times that much in the next year or two, so we absolutely are gonna need more help. Um, and you know, probably, you know, if, if this all starts to come to fruition, you know, additional staffing inside the department as well. Um, which is a good problem to have right now, we're very excited to see this growth coming, because it, with that, it's gonna come a lot of ancillary commercial growth and so on and so on, but. Aggress, uh, which I'm good at, uh, so we uh, had an RFQ request for qualifications, uh, we received. Five solicitations, uh, four of them were found to be qualified, um, and so we're recommending contracting with all four of them. They all provide essentially the same services, a few lean more into plan review than inspection, which is fine, we have a residential inspector on staff. Um, some of them will be able to provide commercial plan review and inspection services, um, a- all of them will do commercial plan. Inspection services, um, and a few will do the residential as well, so, um. We're uh, recommending uh, approval of this uh, resolution to establish an on-call building services pool. Um, and to direct the city manager to uh, sign the contract with uh, the four selected firms. Happy to answer any questions.
You have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to place resolution number one, three, four, seven, dash zero, eight, two, four, on the action agenda. Seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, council.
Alright, how much questions? Absolutely great idea. Having a pool for uh, hundred reviewers and. Specters, whatever we need is a great idea. So that ends the same deal, seventy percent of committee fees goes, goes, it takes thirty percent.
Each, each of them has a slightly different cost recovery structure, um, but it, it's essentially the same model.
Great.
How much questions? At some point, are we gonna bring back some of these um, contracts to ourselves when we have the capacity to hire?
Uh, so these don't necessarily guarantee revenue to these reviewers, um, this is like as, as they're available. As we have projects, we give them, and it's, it's exchange like that, so if we did have more capacity in-house, um, assuming that we could, you know, accurately predict. A sustained forecast of building, not just one glut of two hundred homes, but I mean, if it's truly gonna be two hundred, three hundred, three sixty-five. So on, moving forward over the next couple of years, we can start to forecast a little bit better, and at that point, I would hope that we would bring some back internally, but. Um, this, this I, uh, this I hope is, is a relief valve for staff, like this shouldn't long-term replace what we can do, but. Should definitely augment us during the, the surge as we get, you know, a bulk of permits and.
For example, back in twenty eighteen, I think, when the schools started after the bond measure in seventeen. Mountainview Elementary Schools, new construction, I think that capital projects on every school, we sent those out for review at that point, just because it takes. Um. Takes a lot of effort to go through the, that, that planner view process that we're. As Jay mentioned, you, you're not getting that day-to-day work done, so those are instances that come about. To the city that it's really useful to have this pool to utilize, send it out now, and those instances, we did most of the inspections. So it depends on staff availa- availability and, and time and capabilities if we're gonna move forward as such.
It just seems that we're in that weird point where we're, we're just big enough that it costs us more, instead of being big enough for us to do it in-house. You know, so, and, and that's just my concern, I was just expressing, that's all.
Yeah.
To solve our engineering problems.
No. Unfortunately, this is not for uh, for PEs, for professional engineers, civil engineers now.
Okay.
So the always mother has to say, wanna build a shelter, make it easy for. That's what I like to do, so, if this gets up there, then great.
From motion is second, place resolution number one, three, four, seven, dash zero, eight, two, four, on the action agenda, September seventeenth, council, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now the. No action items, market, yes, Andrew.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, Council, um, I think school started today, right? Yeah, yeah, so, um, just remind everybody what's going on out there, a lot more cars out on the streets. Um, and we typically, when school starts this time of year, we, we start some projects within our parks, Neeland Park will be closed. The playground will be closed tomorrow for its annual ceiling, we apply sealer on the wood structure to maintain its integrity, it. Very well be closed for a week, um, while that sealer is curing, so uh, there'll be signs up, ribbons up, we'll announce this probably. When it opens back up to, to the community, but uh, this annual maintenance has led it to, uh, boy, I have to think back twenty. Six, six, seven years, I think, old now, um, which the initial um. Life expectancy was about twenty years, uh, so this annual maintenance helps preserve that structure, and doesn't have too many more years left in it, but. We'll, we'll continue maintaining as long as we can, uh, because we know it's a popular facility and. Amenity within our parks. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Counsel, I have a new one.